Good evening. The CBA is opening their meeting tonight. The first thing on our agenda is 84 Main Street, and we're going to open it. Karen, would you read the...
Notice of public hearing, Mr. John Deli Piscoli, 42 Westborough Road, North Grafton, Massachusetts. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing in the hearing room of the Southborough Townhouse, 17 Common Street, on Wednesday, February 25th, 2015. Wait a minute. Nope, wrong date. Wednesday, April 29th, 2015, at 7:30. With regard to the petition of John Deli Piscoli, 84 Main Street LLC, the petitioner is seeking a use variance pursuant to Section 174-25A3 in a residential A district to allow an eight-unit bed and breakfast-in facility, sunroom addition, and an antique store in the carriage house. A copy of the application may be reviewed at the office of the Building Department at the Townhouse during normal business hours.
Karen, can I have that, please? Just to correct the issue on the date, the original public hearing was open on the 25th, but it's been continued twice until tonight. This is the third time of the meeting, and that's why the date is different on this versus what it was done. The other thing is, I'd like to ask Mr. Pezoni. We scheduled this at 7:30. Our next meeting is scheduled at 7:35 due to the fact that lots due meetings, you didn't come, and you asked for extensions two days before. So when we did it at the last meeting, we put it in there so that, you know, most likely we wouldn't have to sit here for an extra half hour like we did for two meetings for you already. So I'd like to request if we could continue it until 8 o'clock.
Yes, I spoke on line about that already.
Okay. Does the board agree to that? Okay. Okay. So I need a motion to continue it until 8 o'clock?
Motion to continue the hearing until 8 o'clock.
And we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, okay. Our next public hearing, which is going to start now, is 251 Turnpike Road. Karen, can you read that one too, please?
Please.
Is there somebody here for that? For the Volvo signs? Okay, would you come sit up front, please?
Notice of public hearing, Coast to Coast Real Estate Holdings, 251 Turnpike Road, Southborough, Mass. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing in the hearing room of the Southborough Townhouse, 17 Common Street, on Wednesday, April 29th, at 7:35 PM. With regard to the petition of Coast to Coast Real Estate Holding, the petitioner is seeking a special permit to install one 34.5 square foot sign and one 21.4 square foot sign on the side of the building elevation. Relief is requested under Section 174-114A, minimum number of signs allowed. A copy of the application may be reviewed at the office of the Building Department at the Townhouse during normal business hours.
Karen, do you have the decision recommendation of the planning board? Would you read that into the record, please?
To the zoning board of appeals, from Jennifer Burney, the town planner, March 23rd, sign variance report to the zoning board of appeals on proposed sign for Volvo of Southborough, 251 Turnpike Road. In accordance with 174-11-11 of the code of the Town of Southborough at its regularly scheduled meeting of March 23rd, 2015, the planning board met and reviewed the proposed request for the sign at the Volvo of Southborough, 251 Turnpike Road, and reports that, one, the sign scale is in reasonable relation to the development scale, viewer distance and travel speed, and sign sizes on nearby structures. Answer is yes. Two, the sign size, shape, and placement serve to define or enhance architectural elements of the building, such as columns, sill lines, cornices, and roof edges, and do not unreasonably interrupt, obscure, or hide them. Answer is non-applicable. Three, the sign design is in harmony with other signage on the same or adjacent structures, and provides reasonable continuity in mounting location and height proportions and materials. Answer is yes. Four, the sign materials, colors, lettering style, illumination, and form are reasonably compatible with building design, neighborhood contact, and use. Answer is yes. Five, the sign size, location, design, and illumination are not judged to present a safety hazard to vehicular or pedestrian traffic. Answer is yes. The board voted to include the following recommendation in regards to the application. In regards to number four and five, as it relates to illumination, the planning board recommends that the zoning board of appeals determine, one, how bright will the lights be, and, two, how long the lights will be on.
Thank you, Karen. Who is representing the... Sir, I'll give you the mic. Hello? Is that on?
It's the green.
Oh.
That little circle, yeah, until it turns green.
Hello? There you go, sir. Could you please say who you are and what the...
My name is Gary Cunningham. I work with Sunshine Sign Company in matters involving permitting, and we're here representing Volvo of Southborough in their petition to have additional signs installed at their location, 251 Turnpike Road. The bylaw restricts the total number of signs per business to two of any variety. There is currently a freestanding sign roughly 44 square feet. The building, prior to this petition, had two signs on the fascia paralleling Route 9. The signs were for Farrell Volvo and an additional sign on the right extreme of the canopy, the word Volvo. So, going in, we had three signs, all legally permitted. This petition requests that two additional signs be allowed on the east-facing portion of the building, on the canopy, as you enter the lot at the driveway entrance. The Farrell Volvo sign has been partially removed and will be completely removed. It is the hope of the folks at Volvo of Southborough that the Volvo sign on the right extreme paralleling Route 9 on the face of the building remain, and that two additional signs be installed on the east-facing portion of the building. The issue is number of signs, in short.
Okay. First thing on this, I have an issue, is do you have any pictures of the signs?
Yes, that was in the package that was...
May I approach?
Yes, please.
This is the proposed facing, and this is what's currently on the...
Yeah, I know what the current package is. Karen gave us that.
That would be on the new facing. It's probably just white things right now.
Okay. Do you members have a copy of this? Jeff, do you have? Take this one if you like. Give that one to Jeff, please.
No.
Tom, would you like to stat, please?
So I guess I'm taking it from the planning board's letter that the planning board wants us to determine the...
Hours of operation.
It's over at, the light's on.
You have to keep it closer.
Okay. I think she said the degree of illumination and then the hours of illumination. So can you guys touch upon those two issues?
Well, our goal would be the degree of illumination is so you could properly see it during the evening time, but we already have very bright lights that light up the location, you know, once we set the timers based on when it gets dark. Our goal would be to shut off these at the same time we shut off all the other lights so it doesn't interfere with the adjacent homes in the community itself.
What is that time?
Right now, it's, I believe it's 10 o'clock. So, right now, we don't have any signs, but we have very bright lights that currently light up the inventory in that area and so forth. So the lights that are currently there would be brighter than whatever the sign would be. That just gives some definition, someone driving east that they're actually, what are franchises, because most people can't see it unless you're in that hour window of stop-and-go traffic where you just happen to look right because the signs are parallel in Route 9. So our goal would be to turn, set those timers the same time that the brighter lights on the inventory go off. That way, it's pitch black.
But the ones that are facing Route 9 now are not illuminated? They're just a light against them to see them?
Well, it's lit up just because of the nature of all our other parking lights.
So the signs themselves are illuminated?
No, no. And the illumination comes from the manufacturer's requirements that we have in order to be compliant with their image, if you want to call that Volvo retailing image. So it's not a, it's very common, if you go around the U.S., to find some form of illumination behind a sign, but it's not stark bright. The lights outside that project on the inventory are probably twice as bright as a sign would be. The key is that we're going to shut them off at the same time we turn off the inventory lights so it's pitch black. So, and that's our concern, to make sure that we comply with, you know, to protect the community and people that, you know, are around us as well.
Tom? David?
I don't have any questions.
Paul?
I guess my only question or concern, but I assume this wouldn't be something that would maybe be distracting as you're driving up and down Route 9. It's not overly bright. It's nothing that, there's nothing flashing. There's nothing changing. I know we've had some issues with that.
No, not at all. It's a stagnant, it's just a stagnant illumination behind.
What you're describing is it doesn't sound like something that's going to be a distraction.
We have our vehicles inside our showroom actually are plugged in all the time, so it looks like the cars are on. We have some customers like, well, that's kind of neat, you know. Did you guys, they call us up, did you guys leave your cars on inside? And that's more of a, you know, an eye catcher than anything else. So, and again, we're just trying to comply with Volvo. They want us to have a certain image, and we, our biggest thing is making sure that, and I come from a lot of places where they leave the lights on all night long for safety reasons. We don't have an issue in Southborough, and we don't want to, you know, our job is not to create interest in purchasing a vehicle after 10 o'clock at night. We have our business hours, we have our community to protect as well.
And that should be my second part of the question. You brought it up that what you're proposing is what, I have some automobile experience, so what you're proposing is what the factory is actually kind of requiring you to do with what the new...
Exactly.
What the new showroom should be looking like. So there's nothing in addition to what the factory wants that you're asking for.
No, no. In essence, they want us to, down the road when there's more revenue, they want us to create a, like a different glass than what we have now. I mean, they always, you know, every three years, someone has a new image that they want to project on, and I think, you know, we're on the same page. We would love to say no to something new and...
I know quite often the factory is telling you this is what we want to do.
Exactly.
So this is what they're telling you they want to see.
Exactly. And if we did have a potential issue with theft, we would just put two vehicles out front to keep people from coming in, but we don't have that here.
I understand a lot of dealerships do leave their lights on all night.
Yeah. We don't need to do that, you know. Like I said, we're here, our company that took over, we're the opposite of traditional car dealers. We're not here to sell cars. We're just here to give information. People already know who we are. They know, if they want to purchase, great. If they were interested in a Mazda, they wouldn't be at a Volvo store. We don't need to keep the lights on all night.
Yep.
No questions? Okay. One of the issues with the lights is the fact that that is, those hours of operation are controlled by the planning board, norm, on a normal site plan review when it was permitted. What is your hours of operation?
We're open Monday through Thursday till 8 o'clock, and Fridays till 6, Saturdays until 5, sometimes 6, because of customers, and I've recently installed, we are closed on Sundays, so we could be with our families.
And what color are the lights going to be?
It's going to, it's a white.
They're just going to be white? They're not going to be red or blue or anything? They're just going to be white?
On the, the fascia will be painted blue, or the sign will be blue, and it just, it just has white letters for Southborough and then Volvo.
So it's going to be blue, white lights?
Yeah. Just their colors, you know.
All right. The only question I have is the hours of the signs on the building. I mean, normally, on a lot of other businesses, the hour, the lights go an hour after they're closed, and then there's no reason, and there's, in this town, there are a lot of issues with signs and lighting and everything. So it's something for the board to think about. Are there any residents that would like to speak?
We can cut it off at 9 if that's better for you or...
I'd like, we'll have for the residents first. So you have to state who you are and your address, please.
Sure. Steve Gargliano, 35 Clifford Street, and I'm located directly behind the dealership. My only concern with the illumination is that we do have rear-facing bedrooms, and we have young kids. So I don't want, you know, a light, it's tough to say without seeing what it's actually going to look like. I'm not totally opposed to it. I just, I'm a little concerned that I would have, you know, light shining on my house until a period of time when the kids would be in bed, right?
Question is, on the parking lot of Lunamis, how bad is that?
It's not bad.
So is that not an issue?
No.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, I mean, the only other thing that came to mind for me, and I haven't, I haven't seen, you know, what the actual, how big the actual sign is or anything else, but the thought that I had was, I mean, it would be helpful to us as the back neighbors to have, you know, like a line of arborvitae's or something in the back, something that would kind of block the light, but I don't know if that's feasible, or, I mean, that was just what came to my mind. I don't want to put up some big giant fence or something like that, but that was the only thing that I had thought, that with rear-facing bedrooms, it would be nice.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to, I don't know how fast things grow with the tree, or kill the geopad ones, but, I mean, we'll certainly look into whatever can go up, because I think any type of bushes or something would look nice no matter what it is.
Excuse me, when you do that, you need to use that mic.
So, yeah, we would definitely look into, and if you want, I'll give you my card, and you can help guide us into what would, I think it all would look nice, anything that has that, you know, bushes or anything, you know, for everybody, you know, because you have, you want to have a nice neighborhood, and at the end of the day, this last storm kind of knocked a few trees down, and I think it all needs to be cleaned up.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Can I pass this back?
Yeah, he has come up to the mic, please.
I'm Chris Robbins. I live on 39 Parkerville Road, and I'm just around the corner where I live, I'm not a, they're not at my back door, but they've been good neighbors. Jim Farrell, I know, went out of his way to put shrubbery and trees in the back. I think that was correct, and he's, he always went out of his way in the spirit of what they're saying here. I know my wife and I and others, we go by there all the time, day and night, and it looks pretty good to us, so...
Thank you. Any other public comments? I think, I don't know how the board feels about my comment before, but I think as far as lighting, illumination of the light color-wise, the density is normal, it's below the regular lights, and there's no issue, but the timeframe, I think it ought to be down an hour after you close, which I think, and sir, would that, excuse me, would that be something that you'd be, and how does the board feel about that?
I think it makes sense.
Okay. No other comments? The board like to make a motion to close the public hearing, then?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, have a second? All in favor? All right. Okay. Any other discussion we need on this? I don't think there is. So if we get a motion to approve it with the one condition of the timeframe of the lighting, everything else is permitted properly on the permit. So we need a motion to do it that way.
Just, I just have one question. On Sunday, if you're going to be closed on Sunday, does that mean you won't have the lights on at all on Sunday?
Well, that's what I was going to ask you. I guess we could have it off, or is it okay if we use the Saturday hours till 5?
That's fine.
But even at 5, there's not a need for, I mean...
The lights usually don't come on.
No, the thing is, whatever the planning board did when they did the original site plan on the property of what it said for lighting on Sundays or whatever, you'd have to go by that.
And this is...
I don't know what the planning board did.
And this is just pertaining to the signage light or the illumination of the lot?
No, just the signage light. The illumination of the lot can stay the way it is because apparently that was approved by the planning board, and...
Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be more bright, noticeable than the lights on the building?
Well, it might be, but it's been there for 15, it's been there for 15 years and hasn't been an issue. So I don't, my personal opinion, I don't think it is. I don't know what the rest of the board feels.
The applicant is basically willing to tie it in with the lighting of the parking lot. The lighting of the parking lot's already been pre-approved years and years ago.
And that's what the hours of the lighting in the parking lot would be then?
Well, what does that say, Lee?
I apologize, Leo, I just put that in front of you. That was the original approval, and...
Hours of operation, 7 to 10. Friday to 8. It doesn't say anything on Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday is right below it, sorry.
Is what?
Is right below it. On there, says Saturday and Sunday, until 5.
Yeah, so I think the easiest way is that it be the same as approved by the planning board in the original approval, except for the new signage lighting, or the signage lighting period would be reduced for one hour before they close.
One hour after the...
One after they close, yeah.
That's just on the weekends. What about Sunday?
Sunday hours, I would say, would go the same as the decision of the planning board. So when we, when the motion is made to make it to take the lighting and shut it down one hour after they close, and on the weekend, it is, Sat, Sunday, it is the same time as approved by the planning board in the original approval on May 6th of 1997.
But again, these lights, one of the board's concerns is, you know, illumination, you know, towards the homes in the back. This is all on the, none of this is on the elevation facing Clifford. All this is on the elevation facing Route 9, correct?
It's east, yeah. It just, it faced right down Route 9, east.
Inside, though, faces, it's parallel with Clifford, right? So that's what we look for.
Right. The one that's in the, would be the east side of the building is on the, over the car parking lot area.
We're going to shut that down. We'll shut that down exactly when all the other ones do. In real life, we're not going, it's not going to come on because we time it based on the season.
Excuse me, I got to interrupt you because we're closed to public hearing, and it's discussion basically supposed to stay amongst the board, so legally do it properly. Thank you.
I'm more concerned about the, you know, the big parking lot lights than the lights on the signs.
Well, there's no comment on, when the planning board reviewed this, of the parking lot lighting at all.
That's what I'm saying.
And there'd been no complaints over the years of anything with it. So their issue is on the timing, and they want to change the timing on those, on the sign lights. They didn't say to change the timing on the parking lot lights, just the sign, mandate the timing on the sign lights.
Right. Well, I guess I'm saying, I don't, I don't have a problem with the lights being on, on the signs, so whatever.
All right. Any other discussion here?
Yeah, Dave just made a point on this, that there's a clause in this that, it's a little bit ambiguous, but it sounds like if they reduce the illumination of 50 percent, they can keep it after 10 o'clock. So I think if we adopt a motion on this, we should specify the actual hours rather than tying them to the planning board.
Say that again, then?
I think the short answer is, I think if we're, when we adopt the motion, we should state specifically what the hours are that we're approving, rather than tying it to this planning board approval.
When I had said it would take the motion to suggest that the hours of the lighting would be one hour after they close.
That's good.
All right?
But they're not open on Sunday, so if they want them on at all on Sunday, we got to specify a time.
Right.
How do you say that?
Sundays, we can do them by the, what they say, to whatever the regulation is. So that's the way the motion should be done. So, Tom, you want to add the motion on that for me?
All right. I make a motion that we approve the application with the stipulation that the hours of operation during the week will be 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Fridays, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Saturdays, and 12:00 to 5:00 PM on Sundays.
And the other thing we need to add, that illumination be less than the existing parking illumination.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I can.
Okay. All in favor? All right, sir. You're taking, it'll get filed, and in 14 days, you'll be able to have your paperwork. All right?
Thank you so much, board. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Welcome to Southborough.
The other issue is in, Mr. De Petri, there? You just came in, but we made a thing with the first application to continue until after yours because they were scheduled so close.
Push me out a little bit. Hurry up.
Which, this should be quick. The first thing that we have is the continuation of Park Central through tonight, which we're opening the public hearing up for that now, and where are we, where are we headed with this?
I request a 60-day extension on the Park Central 40B. We'd like to request a 60-day extension on the Park Central 40B. I think we're close with an agreement with the neighbors. We're down to two or three items.
All right. That would make it on the 24th. Karen, is that our meeting in June? Would be the 24th? Because the 30th is on Tuesday, so...
Yeah, it's the last Wednesday.
So, is that agreeable for the 24th of June?
Hang on a minute. No, can we call it the next meeting? No, can we call it the next meeting?
That would be the end of July.
It's the twenty-ninth of July.
A month?
Yeah, well, that'll be, you know, more than sixty days. That's up to you.
Nah, I've got a, why don't we do the twenty-ninth, then?
So, that's ninety day?
Twenty-ninth of, of July.
Wait, let me just get here. Yep, Wednesday, okay. So, seven?
Oh, all right. What do you mean, the seventh, the seventh?
Oh, seven o'clock?
Oh, seven o'clock.
I think it will be the first one, then.
No, it'll be seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
So, the thing is, what we'll do, um, Karen, would you give him the application form for the extension, please?
They're doing an extension on the application?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it was almost over.
What is, um... Karen, what is the extension deadline time on the forty B? We extended that already, right, didn't we, until? Until?
From May twenty-first to July twenty-ninth?
That's what we did already?
Park Central forty B, comprehensive permit, motion made by Mr. Eagle, that the board approved the applicant's request for extension of their application from May twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, until July twenty-first. It was in the minutes.
Okay, so, the question is, we need to give you an extension on the forty B project also, because your deadline is the twenty-first of July. The meeting isn't going to be until the twenty-ninth of July. So, you need to fill out another form for that.
I was speaking about the comprehensive permit.
Right, that's right. That's what we got.
That's the forty B, right.
That's for continuance of the, of the, of the public hearing.
Oh, it's continuance.
That's the continuance, and now we need to recommend an agreement in writing of the ex, um, extension of the deadline.
Until the twenty-ninth, July?
Okay.
Should be a couple of days after May.
Yeah, um, do it for August.
This is the extension of the application.
Ah, I couldn't do that.
Do it for, do it for August fifth of the deadline, time-wise. All right?
So, it shall be extended until August fifth?
Yep, and Mr. Petri, you need to sign that other form. So, we need a motion to accept the continuance until July, uh, what is it?
July.
Twenty-ninth?
Well, you, you already voted on that, though.
No, we have the vote on it. We didn't do that. Mr. Petri, what is the date you said?
July twenty-ninth.
Okay, so, we need a motion to approve the extension till July twenty-ninth at seven thirty.
This is for the comprehensive permit?
This is for the forty B.
Okay, all right. I'll make a motion to extend the, uh, public hearing till, to July, uh, July twenty-ninth.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, now we need a motion for the, uh, excuse me, I've got to reword it. I worded it wrong. The first thing we voted on was continuance of the public hearing. The next, all right, so everybody agreed that it be the continuance of the public hearing. The next motion needs to be for the extension.
I'm staying on that, that's right.
Oh, that's right.
Just saying, I'm just telling.
Yeah, the extension of the public hearing. Okay?
Yep.
So.
I'll make a motion to extend the public hearing.
Till July twenty?
Till July twenty-ninth.
No, until August fifth.
Oh, till August fifth, sorry.
Okay, a second?
Oh, I, now, yes.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, the other thing that we have is Mr. De Petri has filed a application for the use variance on the property, which we have. We have not set the agenda for when we want to do it. Uh, Mr. Petri, do you have a time of when you want to do that, or?
Twenty-seventh of May.
The twenty-seventh of May, one minute here. That would be our normal meeting night.
Right.
Um, there, we've got a few things, um, how would the board feel if we did it a week before? I think because of the issue that's going to be on this use variance, that, um, I think it should be the only thing on the agenda that night.
Well, Karen, what do we got for, so far, for the, for that meeting?
For the twenty-seventh, you would just have the, um...
No, we don't have a deadline yet, so we don't know.
Well...
It would be the use variance.
Yeah.
To put on that agenda, but that's, that's it as of now.
But if we get something else in, we have no choice. We have to put it on that date.
That's fine. I mean, I, I just think that we, we don't need to schedule two meetings on the, a week apart. If, we really don't have anything for the, our scheduled meeting yet, and we may, may not, it's...
No, when we get, just so you realize, they, when we get going forward with this, these meetings are going to be every two weeks.
I understand.
That's a normal process on the forty B project, once it gets going forward.
I think if we have, I think if we have, um, the Park Central at, uh, at, uh, like, eight o'clock, and we leave it open for something at seven thirty, in case something comes in, that's, I think that would be fine.
Yeah, but Park Central is not there. That's not coming on the agenda.
Or, or the...
Park Central's not coming on the agenda until August, until July. So, it's not there.
So, this is just for this, for the?
Use variance.
For use variance. I still say that we should do it for eight o'clock on the twenty-ninth.
Any other comment?
On the twenty, uh, what is it, the twenty, twenty-seventh? I, I, well, how do you guys?
It doesn't sound bad to me, as long as there's not too much already scheduled for that day. I, I, I agree with you.
I don't know anything else.
We don't know, we won't know until the end of the time limit comes.
Yeah.
So, any other?
Do you go, say eight-thirty then?
Thumbs out. Jeff, you have any comment?
The fewer the meetings, the better, I think, but, uh, if there's a concern of something else, too many things coming up, I, I appreciate that. But I would, I would say the twenty-seventh.
All right, so then we'd just, um, put it on the agenda, then?
So, that's May twenty-seventh at eight o'clock?
Twenty-seventh, and that would be?
That's the next public hearing.
Seven thirty.
Well, we'll put his at eight, though, just in case something comes in, and we don't want to hold up the applicant.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to disagree with that, because I'm not going to sit here seven thirty to eight o'clock if nothing else comes in.
No, but then we'd just show up at eight.
What?
We'd just show up at eight, if nothing else comes in.
I favor seven thirty as well, because then I won't have to come in till later.
Right, so, I mean, I think it should go to seven thirty.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Yeah, and anything else comes in?
I'm with you on that.
Anything else comes in, we'll put it on after.
I'm, I'm fine with that. Seven thirty.
So...
Public hearing, public hearing, May twenty-seventh at?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
So, that's just a normal process, and that'll go forward.
Is that for the use variance?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Right, and there was a file and advertise, and, Mr. Petri, you've given all the information on record now forward anyways.
I have.
And we've got all the plans and stuff that were given to us, so we have all that already also.
So, when do we have the, have it advertised by? Do we have enough time?
Um, yes, I sent a email to Daniel. I believe it will be Monday. I gave him the dates.
Okay.
I haven't sent it, actually, I haven't sent it to him yet. I, I was waiting for tonight, tomorrow morning, first thing I have that to send to him. It's a couple of days.
Yeah, because she had...
I'm waiting for him tomorrow to pick up, and I think I put Monday would be a reasonable day.
Yeah, because we've, we did it, and when we talked to her the other day, if we had done it tomorrow, we could do it on the twentieth. So, we have an extra week now, so there's no problem.
All right.
No, I've got it prepped, and I did send him an email. I'll send him one tomorrow saying it's ready to pick up.
Perfect, thank you.
Pick up, and, and you, I don't know if the F P. Brothers will start already?
He does.
Okay.
Okay, so, we have one more issue to take care of. We have the request here in front of us under other business for the extension on Stony Brook Village. And that is Mr. De Petri's fifty-five-year-old project that is presently in a, in a law case, which has been continued again. And, uh, do we have a time limit on when you would like to have that extension to?
Six months.
Okay.
Isn't, isn't it stayed during the lawsuit?
Well, we won at summary judgment, but then they appealed the decision.
It's still stayed during the appeal, though, right?
Say that again, though?
No, no.
Once the lawsuit's been filed to appeal it, the, the timeframes for action get told.
But the, so, I'm looking to extend the forty B permit, which is the underlying permitting.
Oh, that's the one that's not in litigation.
Right, exactly, yeah, yeah.
All right, so, six months would be when? May, June, July, August, October?
Okay.
So, we extend it to?
You guys have a copy of the extension request?
So, extend it to October? Extend it to October thirtieth. The meeting will be the twenty-eighth, and we'll do it for the thirtieth, the end of the week. So, on the twenty-eighth, we'll meet if it's going to be done again or something we can.
Sure, thank you.
All right, so, we need a motion to extend Stony Brook until October thirtieth? We don't need a time on it, because we're going out of business, so we just need the extension, because all we're doing is continuing. We're not extending a public hearing or anything. We're just continuing the permitting, permit. So, we're giving the extension on the permit until October thirtieth. So, we need a motion stated that way, please.
All right, I'll make a motion to extend the permit, um, on the proj, on the forty B project.
No.
Nope.
It's on the fifty-five and over.
On the fifty, oh, that's already switched.
Fifty-five and over was the one in litigation.
That's the one, it's, it is.
You're saying the underlying forty B, right?
The, the fifty-five permit got told with the appeal, so we want to protect the underlying zoning, the forty B permit.
Right, so it is a forty B.
All right, should do the forty B.
Yeah, so, want to make a motion to extend the permit of the forty B project six months to October twenty, what was it, twenty?
October thirtieth.
October thirtieth.
Okay, so, I have here an extension request.
Extension request from Attorney Canton Zaro to extend the time of construction commencement under the comprehensive permit for twelve months. You guys should have that in your packets.
That's Mr. De Petri's decision.
So, um...
I think we can do six.
What?
I think we can, we're okay with six.
All right, so, you got to fill in extension form out to the six months.
All right, well, I, I have this here, um...
Just change, let him change it to six months, and let him initial it.
Okay, um, all right.
I'll have Mr. Karen's hour sent back.
I don't think that's an extension, just to be clarified, I don't think that's the usual form to extend a hearing to waive a deadline. I think this is our granting him an extension for the exercise of the forty B permit. So, I, I don't think that the regular forms are...
Yep. Our regular form has to be filled out, so we have it on record.
Right, but that's usually our form for extending the hearing on something, right?
No, extending deadlines, too.
Oh, okay.
That's a sta, standard form, so you can take and fill that out.
This is the form I gave you guys. This is the form we're going to change from twelve months to six months?
Yeah, yeah.
And what happens is to have Peter sign it, okay?
All right?
All right.
Do we vote on that one?
Uh, I think we, he made a motion. Do we second? I don't think we voted on it.
All right, so, it's been a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Oh, yeah, that's right, you can sit on that one.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
Mr. Petri, I'm against Park Central.
All right. Mr. Pizzoni? Going to go back and open your public hearing. I thank you for letting us have the time of extension due.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm William Pizzoni. I'm the attorney for Mr. Deli Priscoli for the property at eighty-four Main Street. It's good to be before you again. I think we've chatted with you before with Mr. Deli Priscoli as well on this property.
Excuse me, I'm going to interrupt you. No, you have not. There'd been no discussion on this board, on this at all.
No, informally, I may, you may have all been at hearings where we had discussions and talked about what his intention was for it, but not the petition that's before you.
Well, the thing about it is, that's, that could become a legal issue due to the fact that if members of this board were at other public meetings, they're really, there's a technical issue with that. So, I wouldn't make that statement.
Well, I, I tend to disagree, but for the record, that's fine. If you weren't at any meetings, that's fine, Mr. P.
Much as I wanted to go to them, I couldn't go, because it'd be illegal.
Okay, we're here tonight to, uh, to get a use variance. Mr. Deli Priscoli went to see the building inspector, told him that he wanted to utilize his property to put a, a bed and breakfast and an antique shop on it. And this, as we all know, is eighty-four Main Street, which is a very particular and unique building in the town of Southborough. It has, uh, some longstanding history. You can see the early days of the project and the site, and this is what Mr. Deli Priscoli would like to bring the property back to. This is the carriage house that's outside. This is a, like, a sitting area and a, a boathouse area out by the water that he would like to reconstruct as well and put out there, but it wouldn't be used for the use variance other than as a sitting area. The building itself, as you can see, has been sitting in the same location, and the site has been a premier site in town for some time. This here is the backside of the old chapel, which I believe is the oldest chapel in town, that you can't see right now if you go down Deerfoot, because it's all covered up with a lot of trees and everything. But he would reconstruct that and bring that back to period as well. When we spoke to the building inspector and told him what he wanted to do, he told him that he would need a use variance, because it's not an allowed use at the site. And since it's residential, the only thing that he could do there would be residential. I want to flip to the plan, John. Yeah. The site, as you know, is very unique in downtown, and when you talk to people about the stonehouse in Southborough, they all know exactly where it is. It's, parcel is boarded by Parkerville Road on one side, Main Street on the front, and Deerfoot Road. It used to be the house that was the main quarters for all of Deerfoot Farms, which was all the property that ran through, all the way out to Route nine. A little bit of the history on how we got here, and I think this is important, is that I was with Mr. Deli Priscoli about eighteen months ago at dinner at the Wayside Inn with our families, and we were at the antique show. And you should know for the record that Mr. Deli Priscoli does historical renovation, sits on the Board of Directors over at the Wayside Inn as well. So, he's very much into historical preservation and, and doing the right thing, and running an inn. He's been involved with that, with them over there. And at dinner, he asked me, he said he had heard rumors that somebody was thinking about either tearing down the building or turning the site into condominiums and a bunch of small houses. And he, I said, yeah, that's what I had heard as well, and I wasn't sure if it was going to go forward. And he let it go at that. The following week, he called me and said he went and looked at the property. He put an offer in on it, because he thinks it should be preserved in some form, uh, format. Uh, he intended at that time, with he and his wife and his family, to move into Southborough and probably use it as their residence. Fortunately, or for him, but unfortunately for us, his work projects, one in particular, Eda Villarreal down in Carver, started to take off. His children and his wife had moved down in that area. They had a house down there in Carver. Another historical renovation that they did, in fact, this is the sign outside of their property down in Carver. It's called the Leyton House, and that's the type of sign that he would want to do with this property as well. And it was his intent to move in and do a renovation. Then, when everything changed and his family moved down there, he decided he was going to stay down there, and that was going to be his primary residence down there. So, he put the property up for sale. And last month, last year, you all know that Mr. Moss struck a deal with them, came in and showed up at the planning board with an A and R plan to tear down this beautiful building and chop the site up into four different lots. There was an uproar. Mr. Deli Priscoli wasn't aware of that, which was his intent. He thought his intent was to keep the building. And when he heard that, he had an opportunity to terminate the deal, and he did. So, in last September, when this happened, and he took back control of the property, we started having discussions with the selectmen and other people in the community. A lot of the neighbors wanted to preserve the property. How could it be preserved? John's intention wasn't really to live there any longer, so he was thinking about possibly doing an inn or some other type of structure that could run and work with the community. So, we worked with representatives of the selectmen and other boards and talked to them about possibly utilizing us for that type of purpose, but preserving the structure, the grounds... the grounds, the carriage house and the chapel, and bringing it back to period, which was his intent all along. It's just that he wanted to be able to use it as a bed and breakfast. And as those negotiations went on through, I think, almost February, we discussed the possibility of the bed and breakfast and the antique shop on the property. Again, Mr. Deli Priscoli ran into some issues, wasn't sure what he was going to do, whether or not he was going to have the time to handle and run with this project, because he knew it was going to take a lot of time. So we stopped negotiations and discussions with the town, we started continuing this variance request, because we weren't sure what he was going to do with it. But then the ship's righted, everything seems to be moving in the right direction, and he decided he wanted to proceed with the request to turn this into a bed and breakfast, turn the carriage house into, when he got into the design, he found that the carriage house could house a couple of units as well as the eight in this building, and turn the chapel into an antique shop. It's his intention that if this variance is approved, the use variance, is that he will continue to move forward with negotiations with the selectmen's group, and that this matter will go to town meeting at some point to accept the conservation restriction in the agreement that Mr. Deli Priscoli in principle has worked out with the Board of Selectmen or their liaison at this point. It's something that, the future of it being a bed and breakfast would still be in the hands of town meeting relative to certain issues, the acceptance of the conservation restriction and other matters. So now we'll back up to today. We filed our petition in February, I believe it is, and John, again, he's got this unique property, decided that I want my architects to start, go to the next phase, to look at it, to see how we can develop it.
Excuse me, Mr. Pizzoni, I want you to go back to that drawing you just had, please.
Sure.
The thing is, on Monday night, the planning board approved an A&R plan for lots on that piece of property.
Correct.
And the issue with that is going to be, is four lots, so that means there should be four different permits for wherever things are being done. I mean, if you're doing one for the house and one for the antique store, and they're on different lots, so that's something that, what I, we need to, it needs to be discussed, and I think...
I'll discuss that right now, if you like.
Well, I think in the long run, what's going to happen when we get done, that it's going to have to be something brought up to town council also, so...
Well, I don't, I don't think it does, because although an A&R plan has been signed, it has not been recorded. So right now, we have one lot here. The A&R doesn't have to be recorded for six months. We're hopeful that we'll get through all of this process, get to town meeting, and never have to record it.
Right, but it becomes official after 21 days of being signed.
It's, it's an official plan, but the, it isn't subdivided at that point for assesses or any other means as well. It's still one lot, although there, like you say, there will be the chapel, which will be the antique shop, and you'll have the uses of the B&amp;B. I discussed that with the building inspector, who actually interprets the zoning by law and makes determinations on that. And we discussed it, actually, when we were submitting the petition. And he said, since you're asking for a variance and a use variance, that would supersede the special permit requirement that you're talking about multiple uses on one lot, similar to something that we've done in Mr. De Petri's, where Tommaso's is there, because we're having multiple businesses in there, we had to get a special permit for more than one use allowed on a property. The building inspector's position, as he conveyed it to me the other day, was, we're asking for two variances, which is more, even beyond the special permit aspect of it, and that he feels that if this board grants the variance for the uses of B&amp;B and for the antique shop, that we won't need that special permit. I'm going to give you one better, Mr. Bodilini, if in fact it's determined later that we have to go back for a special permit to put the antique shop in, we will. And if you want to approve it without the antique shop in it now, that's fine with Mr. Deli Priscoli. We just want to get beyond the use variance component of this, and not worry about future... Future permits that might be required.
That'll be something that'll be discussed with the board after.
Yeah. So, giving you a little bit of the history here, and I'm going to, told you a little bit about the shape of the lot and where it sits. It's very unique, because it's right on the aqueduct. It has two major thoroughfares, three major thoroughfares in the town of South Row that go right by it, and the building itself is probably one of the most unique buildings in this town. It's, it gets over that hurdle as to the property being, having to be unique, the first leg of we grant a use variance. And I think that's the most important thing, because it would be a crime, it isn't even Mr. Deli Priscoli that's being protected here, it's the community that's being protected. You've got a beautiful building that is, the downtown of South Row is identified with, that could remain. And if it doesn't, and this use isn't allowed, and he's not going to move into it, he's probably going to, and this is not a threat, don't take it as a threat. As a businessman, his only alternative would probably be to sell the property, they'll break it up into lots, and they'd have to demolish it. So not only would he be hurt, the community would be hurt. He doesn't want to see that happen. He spent the last 18 months trying to preserve this property to keep...
36.
Yeah, 36 months. Yeah, you're probably right. To make sure that the right thing is done here. And so I'd like to proceed on the, the use variance. The use that he wants to put in here is, was originally submitted as an eight room, his architects have shown him how he can end up with 11, 11 units, 11 rooms in here. It would be eight in the main building, and there'd be three in the carriage house. One of those would be for the live-in person that ran the facility. The other aspect, when he looked at it, was we were trying to determine whether or not it would survive. Would a bed and breakfast in the town of South Row survive? So inquiry, I made inquiry at St. Mark's, at Fay School, at the Children's Center for Autism, and where do their people stay when they come to the community? Would they like something like this in the community that they could go and stay at? And having been a past parent both at Fay and St. Mark's, I know that the parents that come to town would love to have a facility like this to go to and stay in. I've talked to several CEOs of major Fortune 500 companies here in the general vicinity. They have people come into the community, they'd love to have this as an alternative to a Sheraton or something else, you know, like that, that's just common, for their high level executives to come and stay. It could work, it could work very well. At eight rooms, it was marginal, at 11, it, when you had high peak periods, graduations and things like that, you'll get a lot of use out of it for weeks at a time. So it should be able to support itself. The other thing this will do, not only spurring economic development, which is a good thing to be careful of, it would, it would add an opportunity for it to be open to the public, people to come to see what the grounds look like. It's a bed and breakfast, it's, it's got to be open to the public. John, on that other plan, had some layout of where proposed parking would be and how it would be maintained. People could have weddings there, people could have small events there. It would become an adjunct to the community house, something a little larger and a little, little bigger, to help this community out and, again, stimulate economic development. From my perspective, having lived in South Row for over 30 years, I think this is a great idea by Mr. Deli Priscoli, I think the use is not offensive, I think it's something that is compatible with the downtown, especially where we're going to spend money to upgrade the street right in front of it, as well as other sections of downtown. It's going to bring some more economic development and business downtown, it'll create a beautiful setting, and it's not going to be a detriment to anyone around it or to the community, it's not going to nullify or derogate the intent of the bylaw on how it was created to make this work. I'd like you to hear from Mr. Deli Priscoli, so I'd like to turn this over to him, so he can walk you through what the internal side of the building's going to look like and what he tends on doing on the grounds. And just so you know, in the early stages, he got a hold of the Olmstead plans, I think his name was Charles Olmstead, on the...
Frederick Law.
Frederick Law Olmstead, of the outside, and the plantings and all the grass and everything that was there, and he wants to bring it back to that. I mean, he's meticulous about what he wants to do. John?
Thank you very much. So as Bill Pizzoni walked you through, some of the timelines are a little fuzzy that Bill did, I can give you much more accurate if you're interested of what happened over time, but I have been involved for some time, and what happened was originally that I toured the house during, when the house was being offered for sale, and then they had an auction there that nobody raised their paddle, if you recall. And I went to look at the house, and I called the broker, and he said, oh, it's under agreement with a South Row resident at the time, and his goal was to tear it down. And I said, well, if something changes, call me, and he did, about 30 days later, and the person decided to buy an existing house, and I ended up purchasing this house. Bill's, the concept of what happened is pretty accurate. I, I'm very involved in a number of different endeavors, most importantly, my theme parks. And my wife and I were going to live here as residents, and we were working with the selectmen and so forth, and basically, when it came down to it, the, the public access perspective of it was a little bit difficult to have it as a residence and also have that. So we came up with, and what we thought would be the best use of the property, and to build community spirit, would be this bed and breakfast concept, which would be a way to preserve the house, way to work with the town, engage the town, and bring the people into the house. Along with the bed and breakfast, also offering something you see in England quite often, which is called cream tea or high tea. You see before, I don't know if the Taj does it, but the rich used to do it in Boston, things of that nature, cultural, cultural things. I do have the experience and the knowledge of how to do the house, I've done several. The house in Carver that I restored, I'm restoring a vintage house right now as well in Marion. So this, this, as I walk you through the plan, there are a couple of different points. One is, one concept is, if you remember, this house, up until 1900, actually had another story on it. It was clipped off, I guess, at some point. It would be nice to see that restored, potentially. I have worked with the Conservation Commission, I have worked with DCR and others about, about trying to bring this all back to the original picture-esque view that you see here. This package, this plan here reflects of exactly what we would like to do, and matter of fact, Bill, I'd like to pass these out. This is a little bit more of a updated, there's several copies here, a little bit more of updated, so you have the presentation that you could look at on a personal sheet there. Whoop, there's another one, I'll send this down this end. So, for those of you who are not familiar, this house is a French Empire house, which is pretty rare. It was built in the late 1840s, and it's certainly worthy of restoration, the house has great bones, and I for one would not want to see it taken down if possible, although I have to be practical about it, and, you know, we have to look at all the different options, but the reality is, this is the preferred option. But I want it to be, you know, a collaborative effort to accomplish that. When you look at the house, the house is, the main house is actually three floors, and there are a couple of changes. The house basically is in this configuration with some slight modifications. And what you have is, these are the original names of the rooms, by the way. You have the ballroom, and this originally was a billiards room here, which I'm transforming into a dining room. A keeping room, which basically is a receiving room, in the 18th, in the 19th century, people would come in with calling cards, and they wouldn't necessarily be admitted into the rest of the house, that's how it was in those days, and the person that ran the house would then see if the person that owned the house wanted to greet you. So they'd go into a keeping room. A study, and a kitchen, and a room over here. So this would be the first floor, and this would be really the public aspect, where different meetings could be held at different times, and it could still be run as a single family house, so there's nothing in here that's turning this into something that could not be. It's actually being built as a very exquisite single family, that's actually going to be a bed and breakfast. The, on the second floor, there's several bedrooms up there now. The house actually today has 11 bedrooms in it. So when we reconfigured the rooms and re-rationalized the rooms, what we did is, we made each floor has four suites, so that means the bedroom, a bath for each room, so there's no common baths, other than on the first floor, obviously, there's a, you know, two rooms, but on the second floor and on where the bedrooms are, and the, are all private baths for each, so each one's a suite. With extra room, and you can see that on the third floor as well. The carriage house, which, which I don't have the interior with me tonight, is quite large. It would have, there's two stories, actually, three, there's a walkout basement, but there's two stories, two usable stories. The first story would be maintenance for indoor for cars in one owner's unit, and then, or manager's, and then the upstairs would have two suites as well. The septic system that was put into the house just prior to it being sold by the Garfield family is 11-bedroom, current Title V system, has yet to have one toilet flushed into it, but it's brand new and it's there. The other thing I think would be wonderful is, is, you know, see, all this is lawn and have it all, you know, just magnificent, where we could have open, you know, kind of a mini tanglewood periodically and things of that nature, it could be fun. This little sign that you see here, if you're ever down in the South Shore, you'll see that I restored this house, this house was the, was William Savery's house. William Savery made the cannonballs for the Constitution. His family worked with the DuPonts, they're all from Philadelphia, very historic home. I bought it from the original family, very similar to this, and brought it right back to life, and, and I currently live there. And we did this little marker here, which is really not a sign, it's an historical marker, because the houses in those days, the large houses were actually called cottages, very similar to Newport, that, you know, you hear that name cottage, it's really not a cottage, like you're thinking of a cottage. So we did this beautiful sign here, and a marker, and the town absolutely loves it, and it worked out very well, and became kind of a, you know, a landmark for folks, and I was happy to be involved. And so I'm happy to answer any questions, I, this is just part of the, part of the process to bring this to fruition, and work, continue to work with the selectmen, work with the town, work with the planning board, I've worked with a lot of interested parties. I truly want to see this preserved. I mean, if I didn't want to do that, I, when Mr. Moss asked for an extension to, I did not grant that, for the simple reason, I didn't want the house torn down, so. But, you know, in full disclosure, I do have an active demolition permit, I have to keep that, to make sure that the options are there. That is not my intention, but, so I'd like to work with your board, as I've worked with others, and, and continue to move this forward.
Okay. I have a couple of general comments that need to be made, and it's not that I'm against this at all, but there are some legal issues that we need to take and, and in the long run, talk about. One is, we have not received a site plan for this site at all.
Okay, so this doesn't count as a...
What?
This, this plan doesn't count as a site plan?
No, we need, I mean, we're going to need a site plan, you know, about shrubs and everything that's going to be done on the site. The other issue which you have there is the sign is on a residential piece of property, which is only allowed a three-by-three-foot sign, so that would have to come under a special permit.
Well, actually, to be honest with you, this, if you notice, you know the configuration of Deerfoot versus Main Street there?
Yep.
There's a stone wall there.
Yep.
And I worked, I spoke with your Public Works Director, Karen, I believe, and I wanted to adopt that little corner there, and put some benches there, and make it very, very beautiful, put some spring, you know, irrigate it and so on, and then the marker would be there as a nice little focal point, and I could work through that with you. That's actually on the town's property, it was just a concept, it's, it's not necessary, I just think it would be a beautiful feature for the home.
Yeah, like I'm, I mean, I'm not against the sign issue at all, but it is required...
That was the reason, I don't, you're probably very correct on those particulars, I just wanted you to know the, the idea behind it.
Right, but I mean, like I said, I'm not against it, just as a requirement...
Okay.
Necessary. You also made the statement of putting on the cupola on the top of the roof.
Well, I just think, when I spoke with the building inspector, he asked me, well, didn't ask me, excuse me, that's the wrong word, he suggested that if you're going to go through this whole process, you should make it fairly general, enough in the fact that if, if you wanted to bring, restore the house verbatim, you should just state that. And so even, whether you do it or not and put the cupola on, you don't want to have to go back and do that, that's why I mentioned it.
Well, the issue is, if you're going to put the cupola on, you're going to be above the height restriction, and you're going to need a permit for that also.
And even though it was pre-existing?
That, while it's been gone for...
Oh, a long time.
Right, well, it was gone before the zoning went into effect, so it's not considered...
Probably pre-dated zoning, that's right.
Not, is not pre-existing zoning, so...
Before we were born, Lee.
Which is not a big thing to do, it's just the legal process. That's Mr., do you have a mic?
He's right there.
Here's another one.
Yeah, we have had the discussion with the building inspector, and we know that we would have to come back for a height variance if we were going to put that on, but that's, that's further down the road, until John gets deep into the construction, he's going to, not going to know whether or not it's, it's the thing to do. And that's why it wasn't put on the original petition.
That's right.
The, the sign, we're well aware that we would have to come, you know, go... The, the sign, we're well aware that we would have to come, you know, go comply with the sign by law, and/or come back and get a variance. Where it was gonna be on-town property, we were trying to figure out how that would work, and that would be after the fact. The key issue is, we need to get over the use aspect before further funds are invested here. And I don't think there's a requirement of a site plan with a filing for a use variance. There would be, you could make it a condition, because of traffic that might be coming out of there, that we go back and revisit the planning board with some sort of site plan, but I don't think it's required at, at this stage. And again, when John has his final plans completed, it's not just gonna be a sketch like this, it will have some designated parking. We may decide and determine with the building inspector that there's a need for a little bit more parking, but we don't want to take away from the grandness of the, of the site as well. Some people even said, well, if you have events, they can park on Parkerville Road, they already do that up and down the street for all the games. And that's not necessarily what we want to do, but, we, we know that we would have to go back to site plan review, or you can make it a condition that before we opened, that we go to site plan review to address those things, such as traffic, parking, and the not. I think we need to keep the focus, if we could, on what we're here for, and it's the use variance, it's the use of this site for this particular type of use. And if we go beyond that, it's only gonna muddy the waters, and, believe me, this is gonna be a long process. We need, we'd have to go to town meeting, we've got a lot of places to go. This is just the first stop, because if we don't get relief here, then it ends. And there's no sense spending more money, there's no other ways to pursue it, other than taking the whole thing to town meeting to change the zoning for the downtown, and that's not gonna happen.
But, but let me add, the reason I'm mentioning these other things, Mr. Chairman, is because I always wanted, in full disclosure, I'd like you to see the whole, you know, for the folks that are here, took the time out tonight, and the folks at home, you know, what the overall package may look like. You know, I'm not a lawyer, I'm happy to say that. The, but, I will tell you that, you know, you know, working with me, I think the selectmen will attest to it, I mean, I've been very forthright in working together and trying to come up with solutions. And I just wanted, in full disclosure, I just thought it would be nice to see all that, and what it could really look like. We call it a sign, it's really a marker. And by the way, when I met with Karen, they need some relief, too, on some of the watered work that they're doing on, for drainage and things, and I, you know, willingly worked with the town, you know, on that, and we talked about this, and so, there's nothing in writing, it's just working as a neighbor and working as a citizen. And I just want you to know, that's how I like to work.
That's understandable.
I know it's all legal, and we have to be careful, because it's, you know, protocol, but, I just think it's important that people see the spirit of the whole thing, and, and yes, Bill's right, he's narrowing the issue, and that's what lawyers do. But for the, for the, for the public at large, I want them to understand the whole project.
And the thing, the reason I brought the comment up in the beginning, you have town council review this for us, because of the fact there are some major issues that we need technical answers for. I mean, as far as, you know, if it's going to be one lot, that would be put into the decision, it's gonna be one lot. Because if it's not, then there are issues on different uses, that, you know, you've got two uses, the other issue is the antique store, is the commercial business and a residential district. So, there's just, there's just things that are questionable, and my total purpose of this is to make sure that whatever this board does is done completely properly. So, if down the road, somebody appeals it, and you end up going to court, that we haven't missed any of the legal issues, and it's all done right for you people. And I, like I said, I have no major issues against it, it's just the fact of making sure it's done properly. So, if something did happen down the road, we'd have, you know, we'd been done legal and what do you call it?
Well, you're trying to protect us, too.
That's right, yeah.
And I respect that, and I thank you for that. I, I would like you to know that the, when we talk in the antique shop, I don't want you to think this is something where you go in, and there's dealers and all that kind of thing. What we're talking about here is a chapel that could have a few items, period items for sale, that type of thing, on a very occasional basis. It's not like, you know, a Brimfield or something, you know, it's, 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 it would be a chapel, and plus, that chapel could be used for very nice private little services. I intend, and I have all the, all the contents to restore that to a nineteenth-century period chapel, all the paintings and everything else, lighting and so on.
The only other issue is, which it may not be an issue, but it's something that I want to ask town council, is if the other unit is going to be a permanent residence for managers or whatever, I don't know if it becomes accessory apartment or not.
Well, I would...
Which would be another whole, which I honestly personally did not know, that under the bed and breakfast, because it's not attached, if it's an issue. So, it's just something to ask council, and it's another thing that we want to make sure is done properly, so in down the road, there wouldn't be an issue with any of it.
In all fairness, I mean, I'd like to see it, you know, ultimately, you know, it being one lot requires a number of steps, but, I'd like to not necessarily call that a manager's unit or whatever, I'd like to say it's an eleven-unit, but the, of bed and breakfast potential, but, this also, if you notice the way it was thoughtfully crafted, that this could be a wonderful single-family house. There's nothing in there that's, there's no, there's very subtle changes in that house to make it work, that anybody in today's lifestyle would want that. For instance, when you look at the kitchen, the kitchen today is a little bit cavernous, whereas, what the idea here was to put a solarian room right here, facing south, overlooking the water there, and that would be the breakfast area. That was the one addition, thoughtfully put behind the house, so the street, the street vista is not changed.
That, that...
These are the little things, I know that's not required, but I just want you to know that, that, the reason I mention all that is that this house, I don't want to put anything in any kind of piece of paperwork that precludes this from being a single-family house, if ultimately that's what somebody would like.
No, that, that's not the issue at all, because the bed and breakfast, you're allowed to have all the, that's not a major issue at all. The issue is, the other house, the other unit, that you said the manager's going to live there full-time.
Well, they...
So, that could be, could be, it may not be an issue, but, it's something that we need to ask town council, just to make sure.
And I do want you to know that when the septic system was approved, it was stated that there could be units, that the Board of Health was fully...
I've already gone through the approval and the Board of Health, and I've seen it all, and I know that's all official and done.
Okay, I just want, I...
Yeah, I did review it all.
Okay, thank you.
If, if I could, just to, to hit on this, this possibly being a single-family residence in the future, the underlying zoning doesn't go away. This is a use variance for this particular use, as long as he's using it for bed and breakfast, this is the use. If he decides he wants to turn it into a single-family residence, or the next owner does, they can do that, because it's allowed. It's one, it's acre zoning, you know?
Right, but if it was a regular, single-family house, and they had people living in the other thing, it would be under a use variance for an accessory apartment detached.
It, it would.
Which is not allowed in the town of South...
It would, but, under this use, it's the manager's quarters, or whoever's gonna be running the facility, staying at, you have to have it in this type of a facility.
Right, and what I'm saying, Mr. Pizzoni, is the fact that I just want recommendation from town council, just so that when we get down the road, there are no legal issues that we've gone the wrong way because of these things, that's all.
Okay.
Okay. Jeffrey, would you have any questions?
I mean, there's, I obviously want to hear from residents, and what they're, what they're thinking. I'm not fully with the bed and breakfast, what this use actually fully entails, all right? Bed and breakfast, you serve a breakfast, what else are we serving? How else is it working? Parking, if you're having big events, I think that's a big issue. Where's everybody parking? It's, it, you know, if you're having a wedding, a hundred and twenty people, where do they go? Just dealing with all, all those types of...
Well, to respond to that, people can have a wedding and put a tenant at their house today.
Yeah.
Without calling, even coming to see you folks. So, that's, that's, but I agree, we could, you know, the idea behind this was to make it a cultural availability to the town. I don't see this as being, I, when you drive by this, the only thing that's gonna tell you it's a B and B is a little note at the front of the driveway. I mean, other than that, it looks like a single-family house. There's nothing there that's gonna be, you know, there's no, we're not looking for illuminated signs on Route Nine there, you know what I mean? It's, 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 it's a, just, you, living with what's there, just restoring it.
I've taken, and I've done some research in four or five different towns, and a bed and breakfast is allowed in a residential zone, there are no major issues with them, there's nothing, you know, technically with the bed and breakfast, there is no major issue. The only reason this one's got a few different things, got all the other things added to it, but, if just the plain bed and breakfast, there are no issues anywhere around us, there's...
As you say, don't get me wrong, I think it's a great idea.
There's two, three in Marlborough, there's four in Framingham, and there are, they're just, you know, permitted under residential districts, no problem.
I believe there's one on Sears Road as well.
There is one, which is done by Saint Mark's School, which technically is not permitted in the town of South Row, and up until this came up, nobody even knew about it.
I know it was there.
Well, you lived near it, that's why.
The other thing I might mention is, you know, there's, there's beautiful examples of this. For instance, in Charles Street in Boston, there's the little Charles Street Hotel, which is basically a B and B. What B and B consists of really is, is, is a lot of people, like it's, you could look, you call it B and B, or like a boutique type of lodging, you know, people come in, they go, they're there, they want to be, they want to be a little, they want to have a little bit more care given, they want a little bit more special treatment. My wife and I travel, we like to stay at, you know, the nicer boutique hotels or that. The other thing is, is, there are, you know, when you ask for other uses here, I mean, if somebody wanted to have a little, little meeting or something in one of these rooms, and have tea served, I don't see why that would be, I think that'd be a nice feature for the town. Those type of things, and that's allowed at B and Bs. There's no liquor license here, there's no, you know, we're not serving dinner, we're not, we're not doing any of those things.
Right, it's, the food's just for the guests.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, and the occasional, like I say, the tea, tea thing, that, that would be, which would be a wonderful feature that you could, you know, that's all.
All right, Jeff, Paul?
Actually, there's a lot of the questions I had, so it's, the ingress, the egress, that's not gonna change?
Nope.
It's gonna...
The nice granite pillars that are there, I, I'd like to embellish it a little bit with some more wrought iron and things of that nature, and make it look much more attractive, but, no, nothing else would change. There is one, if you look closely at the site plan... The way the road is being, is, this is gonna be a turnaround up here next to the house. Currently, right now, the road goes around the house this way, that's gonna be all vegetated and green, so there's, people have that private quiet area back, it's not like a circular, and you have this going around here, because there is a second main, I don't know if you realize this, but there's a second main foyer entrance, which is right here. And that's not getting used under the current scenario, and this is really how it should be, and probably was used at one time, based on the physical nature of the house.
I guess like the next thing was parking, you touched upon it a little bit. Even like as shows there, it looks like ten parking spots.
Well, there's a few parking, well, there's parking, but you could park there today, I mean, you could park all over the place, but, you know, there is, I put a few dedicated spots there.
With the final plan, there'd be, I don't even know what it requires.
Well, there would be, it would be, it would just be enough parking for the people that were visiting, that were staying overnight, usually that's a one-car situation, typically a couples or a single. If there was, if the town decided they wanted to have a, you know, a Saturday night string concert out there, and, you know, I would hope that they would, town would accommodate with some, you know, let people park on, like they do for the soccer games. I mean, I think it's, it's a cultural thing for the town. If the town doesn't want it, then we won't do it. But, I thought that would be a nice way to invite the public in, which was an issue with the property at our early discussions, that people felt a little bit excluded, that they really couldn't enjoy this property, and so, there's a, there's a balance there.
Is the chapel, is that the smaller building along the waterway?
Yes, little stone building.
That's what I'm getting confused on, so that's what you're calling the chapel?
Yeah, it is a chapel.
That is a chapel, what's the small, you're saying it's a summer house on the side plan there?
Well, there's a fourth, there's a fourth building.
But there's like a little thing that looks like it has a steeple, like it's a chapel.
Yes, yeah, but that's, that's behind, what happened...
That's not what you're referring, that's, okay.
What happened, somewhere around the same time they clipped the tower off the house, they moved that, what's a glorified gazebo.
Uh-huh.
Okay? And, and that was moved over here for some particular reason, I never quite figured out why. I wanted to move it back to its original posture on the property, which is right, right there.
Right.
Now, I don't know if I can save the property, but I think I could pattern off it and recreate it. It's pretty far gone, but it's still standing.
This is the chapel.
That actually is a chapel.
Right, but this, this building...
That looks a little more chapally to me.
This building here today, this building here today is actually right in front, back of this building.
Okay.
Just sitting there amongst a bunch of poison ivy and so forth.
And then, you said you don't, you don't have a plan, but there is, there is a way to configure the, whatever, the carriage house, the garage there, to get another three units.
Well, there's a full, well, there's a full second story, and it was always the intent that there was gonna be living quarters in, in the carriage house. I mean, the difference now is, is that we would make two suites on the second floor, one suite on the first floor, the rest of the first floor would be parking or storage.
And then, no, you just, I mean, you said, no food or beverage would ever be considered for, like, the public, it's not gonna be...
Right, but we'd like to be able, as I mentioned, the food and beverage would consist of the normal breakfast that you would expect, that, you know, orange juice, and things like that, right?
The bed and breakfast, no.
Regular bed and breakfast, in cream tea and high tea, which, which, so we're clear what that is, that's just regular tea that you normally see, and it's little pastries, little sandwiches.
That's, so there'd be eleven, eleven units total?
Yes, not to exceed that.
That's, those are my questions.
David?
I really don't have any questions, I just have a couple comments. I really were, I was on the sidelines on this, reading from the newspapers as to the whole progress, and getting bits and pieces, and I saw the, I saw the pictures of the young girls petitioning out in front, trying to save the complex, and, and, you know, of course, I've been here for many years, driving by it, and I know it's been abandoned for many of those years.
Well, I think, Dave, just so we're clear, I think they moved out in ten.
Yeah, and, you know, it's, it's, from a distance, it's a beautiful building, I'm sure once you get inside, there's a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done. I know you looked into preserving it along with the fellow that, that, that made the offer, and, and was thinking at one point to, to try to, you know, redo it, and, until he abandoned that idea.
That was seven days after I signed the PNS, I think that was the, not a full disclosure, candidly.
I see.
Just, just so we're clear.
I, I, I for one, I'm very impressed with your presentation. I think it's, I think that for someone, for myself, that lives in town, that, that loves the, the history of the town, that loves the, the connection that this ha, this house has to the town and all its people, the fact that the town, even though we have a lot of, you know, state land with reservoirs and stuff, we really don't, the South Row really lacks a, a community spot. We tend to borrow from Saint Mark's and other facilities when we need events, and I know this isn't gonna be town property, but I think your offer to kind of open it up to community events, I think that's really wonderful. And I, and as long as the neighbors, you know, are, are kind of, you know, we work with the neighbors, and we work with the, with the local community right there, those homes around there, and if they're on board, I, I think that there's a ton of possibilities. I think it's a great thing, I, I give you a lot of credit, sir, for, for, you know, you don't, you certainly don't have to do what you're doing, you don't live in town, you live, you know, sixty miles away, and you have a thriving operation in, in other locales, and I think that what you're willing to offer our town is, is wonderful, and I, and I, and I thank you.
Thank you for those, thank you for the comment.
I had a, I had a question about the, there was a reference to the conservation restriction
I had a, I had a question about the con, there was a reference to the conservation restriction that I guess you're working on with the, with the board of selectmen, I'm not familiar with that, can you tell me what the, what the discussion is?
That is really outside of this board, but just for, just for, we are, we are, we're going to be working with the town, it was always components that were, uh, working together to find a way to permanently preserve and be, be certain that the property ultimately is not changing from what we're talking about now, but that requires several steps. Those are in the selectmen's hands, and actually, the selectmen are just guiding that process, it's really in town meetings' hands.
Yeah, you got you, because I, I, you know, I, I don't think it's totally divorced from this, because this is, a use variance is, you know, in terms of extraordinary zoning relief, it doesn't get much higher than a, than a use variance, so, you know, I guess in my view, if we're giving this extraordinary relief, and the whole purpose of it is to preserve this property and prevent the property from being divided up and the house from being torn down, you know, I would tend to, to want some kind of, of protection against, against that if we're going to grant, grant this, this extraordinary-
That would be a non-starter for me, just so we're clear.
And then I also, you know, share some of my, some of my colleagues' concerns about the parking, I mean, if, if it's in a single-family zone, uh, and it's going to be a single-family house, then I think it makes sense to have single-family zone parking, but if you're going to use it for an eleven-unit business, bed and breakfast, you know, I would tend to think that the parking should be expanded to at least be the same parking that would be on any other bed and breakfast than any other, any other zone. I think, you know, Business Village allows for multifamily uses. So, I mean, is the parking that you're proposing at least up to those standards for a eleven unit?
In all fair disclosure, I don't a hundred percent know those standards, but I made sure there was ample parking for the business that would be run there. But whether that conforms to some other zoning district, I, I, I would be, I, I couldn't swear to that tonight, I could certainly check that.
Yeah, Bill?
If I could, on, on that issue, that's why I suggested that at some point we would probably have to go to the planning board, if there's going to be that type of business activity here, even if it's just for review of site plan. And the building inspector would probably point us in that, that direction, that we need to know what the traffic circulation's going to be, and that you're going to have adequate parking on-site for your intended use. The ancillary use that John's talking about, events and things like that, that's in conjunction with the town. So, we would think that, you know, if you're going to have a string quartet there and, and have like outside tanglewood type of thing, that, you know, the community would work with us to, at, for those specific events, just like if somebody wanted to have a wedding there, they may want to get a liquor license for the day.
Yeah, no, but I, I'm just thinking, look, if there's going to be eleven units, so there's going to be at least eleven guests with, presume eleven cars and, and staff cars and things like that, that there's going to be parking sufficient to accommodate that use, you know, those parking has to be designed to accommodate that type of business rather than a single-family.
You're right, and, and if you look closely, I did create parking there.
Yeah, I think, I think you created twelve there, on that side.
Parking in front of the carriage house there, and there's parking in the cul-de-sac up there, so there's more spaces than there is, many more, many more spaces than there is rooms.
Yeah.
But in a thoughtful way, I don't want it to look-
No, I understand, you don't want to rip apart the parking lot.
Right, I, I want it to look very thoughtful, and, and, you know, I, I, I don't want to make it look commercial at all, I want it to be cultural.
And, and relative to the use variance, the use variance would restrict the, the property for this use. He wouldn't be able to chop it up and put other things on it without coming back here, or going to somewhere, some other, uh, let's say he wanted to split it up and spin a lot off, or something like that, he can't do that.
I thought he's already got a four-lot, you know?
He's got a four-lot approval, yeah, but his intent right now for the B and B is to use it as one lot for the B and B.
Basically, the reason the four-lot approval is there and on the shelf, and the reason the demolition permit is there, is if I can't come to grips with the use variance, and I can't come to grips with the selectmen, then I have to resort to DEFCON five.
I agree with that.
That's up to you guys.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, if we're granting this relief, you know?
Well, you're really granting it to the, you're granting me relief, I guess, because I'm the owner, I think you're granting the town relief, candidly.
But we could limit it, if-
As long as he uses-
Use variance, but if you, if you carve off a lot, it's gone. Oh, I know, that's the way it would work, right, we'd say, we'd grant you this variance, but if you intend to exercise this variance, then you would be committing to not subdividing the property in the future. You wouldn't have to exercise it, you could choose not to exercise your variance and go on your way, but if you chose to-
Right, it's kind of the cart and the horse scenario, you know, we have to work through all that, and we have to, you know, continue on and close out our discussions with the selectmen, and it's still us go to town meeting, so there's, there's a lot more discussions, you know, but apart-
Mr. Chairman? What would the town, I guess I'm not following, what would the town meeting be doing?
Well, town meeting's going to have to decide on the development rights for the subdivision.
The, and also for the conservation restriction on how it's going to be used in the future.
Right, but there'd be nothing to prevent, prevent us from granting the subject to a condition that it's-
It will not have anything to do with what we do at all, it's a whole different issue.
Yeah, you, but don't forget, your conditions have to be restricted by statute to the use that's being imposed on it.
Right.
I, I, I think, may I ask, excuse me, no, Mr. Samino, just give us a few more minutes, and then you'll have the right.
Paul? Tom, you all set?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Couple of things, and I'm going to be all set too, the other thing is, when it comes to the issue of the parking, on Parkerville Road, I don't think it's a major issue at all, but there would be something, I think, that would have to go into decision that it's not on Deerfoot Road.
Yes.
You know, so that's just, you know, something to, to think about. The other thing is, um, under the, the parking and what you're talking about doing, have you gone to conservation yet?
Yeah, I've been to conservation, and I have not filed for, but they have walked the property, and I do have what's called a, a determination of applicability to clean up the property, to remove the, uh, the invasive species and clean up to the edge of the DCR line.
Yeah, that was done before, I know, a few years ago.
Yeah, but that's still viable.
But what about, you know, adding the additional part, I mean, where that's near the, the, the water thing, that's a two-hundred-foot buffer zone, the, you know?
No, that's a hundred-foot zone there.
That's not the river?
No. So it's a hundred-foot zone, but still, the parking, so I'm just, you're going to have to refile with them? I think, I, I don't think so, but I would visit with them anyway to make sure, I would file another determination of applicability prior to more construction than what's already been approved.
Right, there, there's, there's a, if I could, there's like a little planted area next to the carriage house, that the hundred-foot comes up to about there, not where the current roadway is and the proposed parking is. And we had a determination, went through this with the state and everything, that because it's an aqueduct, it's not a river, it's not subject to the Rivers Act, and actually, the, they're only going to let us be very selective on getting rid of the invasive species. We can't go in there with machines or anything, we have to go in there with, like, this little paintbrush to paint the species that have-
What you have is, you have this, I don't know if you've ever seen it, but on the cranberry bogs, they have a wand, so they don't kill the cranberries. I'm a cranberry grower too, but they, uh, they have a wand, you wipe the weeds, but not the, not the plants, you know, it's like a hockey stick. Something like that would be perfect there, so you're not just spraying, you know, willy-nilly, you know, that, so I've worked that out. But to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, I would always go back in full disclosure, just to make sure that, that everything I'm doing, but right now, where all the work that's planned, other than the restoration of the, full restoration of the chapel, is outside of the hundred-foot.
Okay, um, no more questions, the board presently, I'm going to open it up to the public first, I am going to open it up to the board of selectmen, Mr. Samino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Paul Samino, three Austin Kelly, I'm actually here speaking on my own behalf, and I apologize for trying to break in there, but the, the reason is because I was wanting to address the particular issue that Tom and John were, I, I think we're talking past each other, frankly. I think everybody is actually thinking the same thing here. Uh, I don't think Mr. Deli Priscoli has any intentions of going, and, and you, you, you correct me, obviously, any intentions of going through with this in a subdivided lot, this would not be done other than as a single lot. So your, your point about granting relief, subject to that condition, I don't think is an issue. Now, whether he can, uh, whether, whether he, how and when he decides whether he wants to, to conform to that condition, and, and if he doesn't, then he doesn't, and then it doesn't go forward, that's a separate issue. Uh, I hope I'm not making, uh, muddying the waters any further than, than that, I think, I think you're correct, I think you're correct. And I, and I didn't want to have that be, um, you know, a sticking point as you guys think about this. In other words, if that's a condition, as you just said, he can choose whether to conform to it or not, and, and John, you can confirm or not, if you choose tonight, that if, if he can't get that, if he can't get, um, you know, what he's looking for, for his development rights on the rest of the parcel, then maybe he doesn't go forward with any of this. But the point is, he's not going forward with any of this on a split lot, I don't think.
Correct.
But what you're saying is, is that if he does the bed and breakfast, it almost by definition means that he's not going to subdivide the property.
He will have already satisfied himself that he's been, that, that, that his development rights have been, um, appropriately, um-
Compensated.
Compensated, or he won't go forward.
No, I know, but I'm, I'm saying that if, if he does, I mean, it's conceivable that we grant the, the variance for the, for the bed and breakfast. It's a big lot, and he decides ten years down the road, you know, geez, I could make some money if I carved off another lot in the corner there and put in access. I'm going to have my bed and breakfast on this lot, and I'm going to get another lot over here, maybe, maybe I'm going to put up a couple condos.
But we have the right-
We could restrict that.
We have the right to take-
For the record, I have no interest in that.
We have the right to put that into the decision.
Shouldn't be controversial.
No.
We have the right to put that into the decision.
That it can't happen, right, so, yeah.
Well, as long as it's a bed and breakfast.
Right.
Say it again?
You can only put that in as a relief.
You're right, because the underlying zoning- He loses the use variance, period, we can't, we can't restrict him from changing residence and zoning.
Again, he'll correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the intention is to, to abrogate the development rights permanently, so that scenario would not occur.
Yeah, and, and it's also conceptual, because, look, the whole point here is, we, they're asking, he's asking us for a use variance, zoning relief, and the carrot is that we're going to preserve this property forever, so if that's the quid pro quo, I want to make sure we're getting the quid, that, that this prop, this unit is not going to be torn down in years.
Actually, that's, that's, that's not correct, what, what you're, this is a component of the quid pro quo, it's not the end-all and mean-all. If that's what it is, as I mentioned before, game over.
That's what I was hearing in this, in the pitch, it was-
No, that's not the pitch.
This was, hmm, all right.
The pitch, the pitch is, is that this is a component, just like the development rights sale is a component, and the partnership with the town is a component. If none of those, if those components all, one, one or more of those fail-
What I heard was, this is for the town, this, this is going to preserve the town.
Isn't it?
No, but Tom, I think what he's, what he's saying is, if, if we make a decision right now to make the, to grant this use, if we, if we try to restrict him completely, and then he can't get one of those other things through, he's still not able to do it. Oh, yeah, no, I agree with that, right, no, I agree with that a hundred percent, right, he can't, if he doesn't get to do this project, he's not, pretty clear. Right, so we're only limited to what, to get our approval, we got to limit that. That's what I was saying.
Right.
Yeah, you are, any restriction that can only be towards this use, not huge use or stuff, and to get, he's not going to record that four-lot plan unless he has to, because why would he want to pay taxes on four lots, four billable lots on town, it'd be a lot more expensive than what he's paying.
Well, my goal, to quite honestly, is, is, the reason the, the four-lot plan was updated is because I wanted to show the four-lot plan as I had promised the planning board, because the original subdivision plan that was prepared by Mr. Moss was labeled, if you look at it closely, and I have the plans here, if you're interested, say that the house to be demolished on A and R one, let's call it. On A and R two, I consciously set it up so there's four lots and the house remains. I just wanted to make that as a, you know, because if this all, you know, that's another option perhaps, but I promised the planning board I would do that, and I wanted to follow up with that. I wanted to clean all these issues up, including this issue with, is, is, if the town feels appropriately to grant this, and I'm working with the selectmen after this, and then hopefully we go to town meeting and we get, everything goes together and, and the project moves forward. If any of those components fail, then I have a four-lot subdivision and demolition permit, those are the decisions.
Now, I, I think the point, I think your point, though, is, is right, if, if the ver, if the relief is, is approved with that condition, that's fine with Mr. Deli Priscoli, if he can't satisfy himself with regard to his rights, he's not going to come back and do this anyway.
Right.
So, I, I think we're all in-
If he doesn't get everything he needs to do this, then I agree.
Then you, you don't have any risk, because-
Whatever else he works with the property, but I'm saying, once he's, once he's, once he puts both feet in and does this, you know?
That's it.
I don't want him to decide five years down the road, you know, I'm going to turn that town down.
I couldn't decide-
The development rights will be gone by then.
I couldn't decide a hundred years from now. You know, basically.
For different reasons.
No, it'd be permanent, so it'd be a benefit, long-term, that, I guess we-
That, that's what I'd like to build into the variance if we're granted.
Okay, do we have any other comments from any public officials?
Good evening, John Rooney, speaking as John Rooney, and not authorized to speak on behalf of anyone other than John Rooney. I thought it'd be important to give you a little bit of the historical context of what went on relative to the negotiations with the selectmen, but let me just first say that, uh, Mr. Eagle's comments, I can, I can tell you from my, uh, interaction with many, many, many residents in town, Mr. Eagle's comments are pretty much the sentiment of the overwhelming majority of, of people in town that I've talked to. When this matter came before the selectmen, we as a group agreed that it was in the town's best interest, to the extent that we could, to save this existing structure and to keep the lots from, the four lots from being developed. In other words, maintain the indivisibility of those lots. And that was the objective that started us down the road towards negotiating a preservation restriction, which the road ultimately ended up having too many twists and turns, so that negotiation ultimately ended. I met Mr. Deli Priscoli about one year ago, um, and just as an aside, although he says, uh, he's glad he's not a lawyer, I can tell you, if he was a lawyer, he'd be a very good one. One thing is, is I've found is he is certainly a man of his word, um, and he, and during the entire one-year negotiation process, there was never an, an occasion where I was given any reason to question anything he said, we had multiple, multiple conversations, and he maintained the consistency throughout it. I think that's important for this board to know, because you're, you're being asked to make a, a very significant decision on behalf of the town, and part of that decision involves the credibility of the petitioner. I, I think it's, it's a pretty easy decision for this board, because the consequences of an alternative decision, as Mr. Eagle noted, are, are very troubling for this town. I've lived in this town, coming up now for my twenty-fifth year, um, and some people see saving this house and saving these lots as, as historic. I, I really don't, I see it more as progress, because what we're talking about here is, is making the town, making this area, making this particular piece of property better, making it better, making it more useful for the town, making it more the hallmark of the town, more the signature of the town. And to me, that's progress, that's not history. I, I don't think we'll find another person, if, if this ultimately fails, we'll find another person who has the time, energy, or resources to do what's being proposed here. And, and I think, you know, my crystal ball, although it's not always clear, it's mostly opaque, but, you know, if, if ultimately this use variance is not approved, and the, the property is sold, I mean, the likelihood of finding another, uh, historic restorer, I, I think that market is very small. So, as an individual, I am speaking in support of the use variance. I can report that I spoke as individuals to Mr. Boland and as individuals to Mr. Kalenda, and they too are in support as individuals for this use variance. Like I said, it, we took up a lot of time with this on the board, um, but we ultimately, and where I began and where I'll end, is the, the objective was to maintain the structure and maintain the indivisibility of the lots. And that's the path I think the town should take, and I'd urge this board to approve the use variance, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Um, any other public officials want to make a comment?
Yeah, can I just clarify?
Yes.
Just so you know, I spoke to Mr. Boland and Mr. Kalenda separately and not collectively. I actually spoke to them on separate days, Mr. Boland yesterday on the phone, and Mr. Kalenda today in person, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Mrs. Vaneth?
Good evening, board members, Mr. Rooney did not reach out to me, however, I am unreasonable at times because of things that are happening in my own life right now. The board, the entire board, even though I'm speaking for myself this evening, have spent, Mr. Rooney and Mr. Samino, numerous hours speaking with the property owner on this, and I think the entire board, from my knowledge and the effort that went into it, is in support of moving this ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public official? Okay, any residents that want to speak now? Please state your name and your address, please.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Hewitt Heizerman, my wife Laura and I have lived at Ten Central Street since nineteen ninety-five. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of friends of the Burnett Garfield House. Our purpose is to advocate for the permanent protection of the home and property at eighty-four Main Street from destruction and/or subdivision for three reasons, historic, aesthetic, and economic. Joseph Burnett is Southborough's greatest native son and philanthropist. The viewscape, which is on one of our high-traffic roads, helps define our fences of stone heritage, and people desire to recreate, shop, dine, lodge, operate businesses, and raise families in communities like Southborough that are authentic and unique. If the home and property remain intact, we support a zoning variance for eighty-four Main Street that allows for a bed and breakfast, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from residents?
I'm Alan Busanzen, my wife and I, Phyllis, have lived at Twenty Deerfoot Road since nineteen sixty-nine. I want to really commend Mr. Deli Priscoli, I'm just thrilled with what I've heard here. I'm also with the friends of Burnett Garfield House, and in the course of things, we've done a lot of digging into the history, and we've come upon a few things that I think are generally not known around town, and I have a chart here, I'd like to, it would just take a couple minutes to show you, if, if you've got the, if you, why don't we?
Sure. You know, you can take and put that on the stand over there. You know, you can take and put that on the stand over there.
I'm a visual guy.
It's a little flimsy, but careful.
Don't step backwards.
For those of you that weren't around in 1894, this is a topographical plan of the lot that we're talking about. This is 84 Main Street, the Stone Mansion. And right now, the reservoir covers that part. This is the little road that runs between Deerfoot and Parkerville. Picardi's property is over here. Parkerville, Main Street, Deerfoot Road. This plan came from the U.S. National Park Service, Frederick Law Olmsted National Historic Site. It's project number 1432, Joseph Burnett. And this is where Burnett and Olmsted collaborated. Actually, the occasion was the impending reservoir that was going to replace Stony Brook. But there's some interesting things on this chart that seem to be unknown by many people in town. One of which is, the original Deerfoot Farm, you could throw a baseball from 84 Main Street into that barn. Right now, if it was still there, it would be underwater. Deerfoot Farm paid the wages for more than half of this town at one point in time. It seems like Burnett is very well-known for the connection with St. Mark's, the schools, the townhouse, the library. But Deerfoot Farm isn't around to defend itself anymore. And I happen to come from, I was born on a dairy farm and do, did all that same stuff, so I have a feel of connection about it. But that's, that's, that's part of the whole picture. And you have 4.7 acres here, you've got seven acres here of protected land. That's a DCR land, protected forever. There's a public walking trail right down there. You get a beautiful view of this property from the other side. Actually, you would if we cut the brush away. But this property is, it's like an island. It's, it's open to view from three, public roads on three sides, public land here. Another thing about Burnett, there's a lot of photographs around from, you know, the 1890s here. Joseph Burnett, for 49 years, was a supporting member of the Massachusetts Horticultural Society, a very prestigious, renowned group. He hosted annual meetings at his house. It was a showplace, trees, stately yums, you know, fruit trees, all of that. So it's not, all along, as this progressed, those of us working, you know, with the Friends Group have said, you know, it's not just about the house. It's the whole, it's the whole works, you know? And so I just want to make that point, that I think Burnett and Olmsted had a pretty good idea here, and keeping the whole thing intact together is, it's the right thing to do. And I hope the town will do whatever is necessary to make it happen.
Thank you. Any other comments? I think that everything is sort of favorable in, in the support of this. I think the presentations also were very good, like Mr. Eagle said. My personal issue is, I just think that the board needs to take, and we need to get some decisions from Town Council, and they're just to clarify things for us, and then we can go forward and approve it. I have, I mean, I'm, I think it's been done the right way. I think in, in favor of the town, it'd be the right thing to do and everything, but just so that legally down the road, if something, because honestly, there may be some people in town that aren't going to be happy with this, and if we get an appeal period and we do miss some of the legal issues, it would cause problems. So what I'd like the board to agree is to get a motion to give me permission to talk to Town Council over the issues I brought up, which are in the minutes, and reschedule, continue this to our next meeting. And my only thing to Mr. Pizzoni, Mr. Deli, do you mind waiting a month, or would you want it done earlier than that? Our next agenda is on May 27th. Does that...
I would work with what the board's pleasure.
Okay. So if the board's agreeable, I'd like to get a motion, we do that, and get Town Council to give us a written decision, and I will have to talk to Mr. Purple to get permission to talk to Town Council to do so, and get it done, and then have them give us a written, and have them do it legally in writing. So we get a legal written decision from him on the, on the different issues and whatever way to be the right way to go. And then our next meeting, hopefully it'd be no problem, we'd be able to support it or whatever.
What, what were the issue, what are the issues?
What?
What are the issues that you're referring to?
Well, the issues are on the lots, the issues are in the, the, the antique store, the other apartment, and it just, all the things that came up, and it, to the point that he may just make a decision and say, well, that is not an issue for now, but it will be something that will be done in the future, so it'd become a condition that if you go forward, you have to do all these different things. So it just clarifies, you know, the different issues that way. And that way, there, we've done everything proper, and there'd be no, you know, no lanking spots where if there was an appeal to it and after, that we've done everything proper, and we've got a proper thing from Town Council to help make sure. I just think it helps secure...
Wouldn't he have to go in front of Planning Board for that, though?
What?
Wouldn't he have to go in front of Planning Board for that, for the, for the antique store?
No, not that I know of. That's why we need to ask Town Council. The other issue is that Mr. Pizzoni said, but it's done before, we have a right to go for a site plan under the ZBA Board for that, because it is basically a commercial use, it's not just a residential, and the way there's going to be parking lots and everything built. So these are things that I think that we need to ask Town Council to decide, to give us a legal thing, do it's done the right way. That's all. And if he says we don't have to, and we don't, then we don't. So it just, you know, ties the ends in and does it proper. I mean, we've done many use variances, and we've done many site plans on them, and had them done that way. So it's just, you know, whatever is the right way. The antique store, I mean, it's, it's a multiple use, and it's a commercial use on a residential property, and, I mean, I don't, I mean, there's, there's different things like that you can do and have been around, that are around town. There's some different stores like that in residential property, but how it's permitted and stuff, I honestly don't know. That's why I'd rather have Town Council tell us that, yes, you do it that way, you don't. And then he may say, like Mr. Pizzoni said, well, that's something that should be withdrawn and brought in later at, under a different meeting or something. But that would be, you know, a decision made by Town Council. So I'd like to get a motion, be able to go forward and do that, and then after that, if the motion's agreeable, then we'll make a continuance for the May...
You need a, you need an extension.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I was saying, wait, wait. We have some further comments, I think.
Yeah. My only comment is that I, I, you know, I'm all for making sure all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, and everybody's comfortable with your decision, but I think we need to be sure and define exactly what we're looking to get from Town Council, in his opinion. I mean, some of these issues, like the antique store and the B and B, the building inspector's already made a determination on that and told us we need, it all can be covered under the variance. He's the interpreter of your zoning bylaws, okay? So that takes care of that issue. But, I mean, you know, to Lee's point, and I, and I don't want to be a stick-in-the-mudley, but I think we really need to define what questions we're going to ask them.
Now, the thing is, the decision made by the building inspector has not been given to this board. He made the regular use variance, and that's cut and dry, and I believe in what he did and the way he did it. That's not an issue. So I just want to take and make sure that we have all the legal issues done and taken to go, set forth properly. And the other thing that we have to do is, we have to have an extension also, just before we leave tonight.
Yeah, you'd need an extension, I know that.
Well, we've got to fully clarify everything, too, because there's actually two use variances that you're technically requesting right now. One for the B and B, and then one also for the, for the antique store.
We filed a use variance for both uses.
Right.
On one use variance, not two.
Under, yeah, but it's, you can do that. You don't have to do it for each particular use. We said for the use of a B and B and for an antique store.
Because then we have a lot still, I mean, those, the questions, I, I get it, have some specific questions, but then we really got to figure out how we're going to draft this, or think about this decision.
Well, I'm looking at the, at the application, and it's talking about the use, it cites the use, general use variance clause, 174, 2583. And the only other clause it cites for the zoning relief is the, is the prohibited uses and...
And these are both prohibited uses.
Isn't, isn't two, two uses on the same lot, isn't that a, a different...
That's, that would be a special permit. Right. The building...
That's a different provision of the bylaw, though, isn't it?
Right. It's a different, different position, provision of the bylaw. But we were asking for two use, two use variances, basically, under that. And that's what the building inspector suggested and said that he thought we should do.
No, what I'm saying, Bill, is that you set the general use variance, and then you specifically say that you need the variance for...
The prohibited uses.
... prohibited use in RA, citing, you know, that's the, that's the, that's the reckless use.
Well, no, both, both uses are...
Both, under that, under that same section?
Yeah. You can't, it's residential. You can't have either one of those uses.
Oh, I, I thought the two uses on the same lot were, was a different bylaw. That's under the same section.
That is, that is, that is a different part of the bylaw.
So I would think if you...
That's a, that's a special permit.
That would be a special permit.
Special permit. Building inspector's position was that you're asking for a use variance for both of those, that trumps the special permit.
But I, I agree with Lee on this. In my mind, at least, the application's a little bit ambiguous as to whether that special permit is subsumed within the application that's presented to us.
Okay. And while you're at it, make sure he's comfortable with the 11 units versus the eight units.
The what?
The 11 units proposed as opposed to the eight units, because we made that amendment in our presentation.
The thing, to make it easier, that it'll be done, which has been done in the future, is talking to Town Council, and Town Council will review the, the meeting tonight, and he'll get the issues done in the right way, and legally in writing, get it back to us. And get it back to us prior to the next meeting, and he will also get a copy back to you.
Yeah, because if he, if he can get it to us within the next couple of weeks, then a draft decision may be able to be crafted as well.
Say that again?
Then a draft decision may be able to be crafted as well.
No, the draft decision won't be drafted until we do it here at our meeting. It's not going to be done prior to. Karen now does all our decisions and everything for us, so that'll be, you know, set forward at the public meeting.
I recall being, I recall being asked to draft a few of them for you.
That's right, and most likely you'll be asked to work with Karen, but until we get approval, we ain't drafting the decision.
Yeah, but once we have his components...
And the other thing right now, just so you know, in talking to Town Council, he has several major issues going on right now, and he is very busy. So, you know, he will do the best he can do, and that's why I asked to do it for the 29th, 27th meeting.
And, and that's kind of why I asked to define the questions and the issues you're going to pose to him, so he's got a menu and it isn't changing or fluctuating.
That's right. He'll watch the video, and he'll know the questions that were asked by all members, and he will do that.
Okay.
So, we get a motion from the board? Yes, wait a minute, Ms. Faneth?
Bonnie Faneth, I am a board, I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen, but I am speaking for myself. For clarification, Mr. Bartolini, I believe Town Council prioritizes anything before him, and if it's date-sensitive, I'm sure that would be a priority.
Thank you.
Chris Robbins, 39, Parkerville Road. I'm, now, I'm not an expert on the permitting or the regulations, but it just sounds like there's a lot of redundancy we're setting up here that other boards would be doing, and these questions would be answering, be answered as you go forward. They're asking for a variance.
I, I hear you there, but you, you've got to be very specific and very careful. There's many things that I've already seen in my short time here where there's an exciting project like this, and it's fantastic. 20 years from now, Mr. Deli Pescoli's not owning it, they manipulate the variance to do something different. We just need to make sure. That's the only thing. It's a great project, but we can't jump ahead of ourselves and not make sure that we have it exactly right.
Right. I, I think, Chris, with all due respect, I think this will help streamline the process for these guys. We'll get, it'll zero in, and it will, it'll eliminate some of the, some of the steps down the road as, as this thing progresses. I think, I think this is a hiccup for now, but I think in the long run, I think you'll save some time. I think, I think, I think Chairman's right.
The thing is, the major issue with this is that five members of this board make the decision on the use variance. Technically, it's not going to mean anything, because it's going to go to town meeting, and whatever they go in front of town meeting for, 200 or 300 people could be there, and they could go the other way. That's nothing to do with us. So, you know, we hopefully make, I, I don't have, like I said, I do not have a problem. I think the approval on this would be good for the town and everything, and I think the rest of the members feel good about it, but any one person could appeal this decision, and I want to make sure that it is properly done, so if it does go to court, there's nothing that could be, that we missed and did the wrong way.
I, I want to thank you for saying that, because the three words I think of in terms of the permitting process in this town, as I have seen it, is we need to be more prudent, more timely and thorough, in getting this done on a timely basis, so it doesn't extend everybody's time, because we're checking too many t's and i's.
And that's why I...
We need to be thorough, prudent, and timely, and if we measure that and track it and move it along properly, I'm, I, I support that fully.
And that's why I asked Mr. Deli if he wanted to wait until, go it prior to that date, and he said no. Time-wise.
I appreciate your comments, and I just, I, I appreciate the board's guidance, and I'd like to follow that.
Thank you. Okay. Can we get a motion, and go forward with that, please?
I make a motion. Mr. Chairman can speak with Town Council and get his recommendations.
Will we have a second?
Second, I'll second it.
All in favor? The other thing is, Mr. Rooney, as an assistant chairman of the selectmen, can you give me permission, or do I go through Mr. Purple, to talk with Town Council? Because I have to get it technically through the Board of Selectmen to be able to talk to Town Council on anything.
Why, why don't you call me tomorrow morning, and we'll take care of that?
Okay. Thank you very much. The other thing is, Mr. Pizzoni, we need an extension. Extension form is here.
Can I have, when do we continue, from the 27th?
The 27th of May. We haven't got that far yet. We're going to do that in a few minutes.
Okay. And since that's running into the holiday weekend, we'll give you 10 days after that to...
I think we do the extension until June 10th, which doesn't, I mean, just gives us, no, we're going to meet in May, it gets done that night, it'll be a done deal, it doesn't matter. So we need a, a motion to grant an extension to June 10th.
So moved.
All in favor? Okay. The other thing is, we need a motion to continue the public hearing until May 27th. What time, Karen, do we have? We've got the use variance at 7:30?
That's all that you have on there.
Oh, put a Sean McQuay in.
What? Say that again?
Put her...
Put Sean McQuay in, 7:29.
No, we can't do that, because we've already publicly voted on it, and we've continued it. I would say that the only, the only bad issue about that is that technically, we're going to need at least two hours, I think, for the presentation on that use variance. It's going to be a major issue.
An issue variance?
Yes. It's going to be a major... What?
No.
No, not yours.
Can we let it go before us?
I got a question. Would the board consider meeting at 7 o'clock?
That's fine.
And we'll put you on at 7, because basically, I think if we come back, it's going to be kind of easy to do, and, you know, it shouldn't take us a half hour to make a decision. Um, we're just going to get you a ride out of Boston.
If Bill's giving me a ride, then I, I'd be here at 7.
A ride out of Boston quicker.
I thought that'd be appropriate.
Because he comes home by the train, but I think that would probably, we've already scheduled the other ones, and we can't do that. So I think the proper way, if we agree to meet at 7 o'clock, and by 7:30, which is not 7:30, it goes longer, that'll be all right, because we'll just keep the other one going. But...
7 o'clock on the 27th.
Yep. Yes. Is that agreeable with the board?
Yep.
Okay, so we need a motion to continue it to May 27th at 7 o'clock.
I motion to continue it to May 27th at 7 o'clock.
Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a discussion here?
No. Second, wrong one.
Second, no discussion.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you very much.
Is there anything after Park Central's use variance that, that night?
What?
Is there anything after, on the 27th?
Not yet, no.
Yeah. Oh, no problem. Just got a nicest thing going.
You can be here at 7, then you can leave. Thank you, sir. Thank you both very much.
Comes on the agenda.
Okay. Couple of things here, so we can go home. One thing is, I... One thing is, Karen gave you guys, last week, last meeting, we had Paul talk to us on the phone. And this is the applica, Paul, you have to sign the papers, and I already signed it, but this is the regulations and stuff. So she's given it to you guys, just to review and have, no big deal.
Thank God we can...
And the other, the other thing is...
Yeah, I know.
We received a letter today, Lisa Capello has resigned from the ZBA Board, because she's moved.
Oh, yeah.
So the thing we, I'd like to set forth is make a recommendation for two things. One, to the Board of Selectmen to appoint Andrew as a permanent member. And the reason it's going that way is, the normal process is, the senior alternate gets appointed.
No, no worries.
Just so you know, all right?
Yeah.
So that we do that.
I'm still better.
So we get them to do that immediately. And I don't know when they meet next, because I'd like to get that done before the 27th, so that we sit. And then, on the 27th, you will also have to sit on the use variance. There is going to be a discussion that I'm going to have with Town Council as far as you and Andrew sitting on the 40B, which there may be an issue, because it's prolonged. But we're, they're going to get into a major discussion on it. We may be able to get it, so that the two members can sit, because otherwise, it's just us three, Paul and David and myself, because Lisa's gone, and, and...
He's not sitting.
Tom's not sitting for the conflict, but then, what do you call, is also left.
Alan left.
Alan has left. So I think, in talking to Council, and the way it is, because...
Rotten like flies.
The 40B basically has not had any real major discussion. And what discussion we've had, it's just going to go forward. So it's going to start. So hopefully, we're going to talk to Ed Monchon, and also, because he's our special consultant, to get permission, so we'll go forward. But I'd like to have him...
Aldo about that.
What?
I'm not on this, but you better ask Aldo about that.
No, I'm going, oh, no, definitely. No, no, we're going, I'm definitely going to do that. Matter of fact, I need a couple of things. We have to do this all legal. I need a motion to give me permission to re-discuss that with Aldo.
Motion to discuss that with Aldo.
The 40, the, the...
Second.
Members of the 40B, all right? All in favor? Aye. Okay, now, I need another motion, or I'd like another motion, that the board agree that the Board of Selectmen appoint Andrew as the permanent member of the board to fill Lisa's spot.
That we recommend that the, that the Board of Selectmen do that.
Yes.
Yeah. Tell the Board of Selectmen to do that.
Right, I'll make a motion that, that we recommend the Selectmen appoint Andrew.
Okay, we have a second? Second? All in favor? Aye, okay. The other, the other issue is that we send a letter to the Board of Selectmen, which I want to do, have Karen do tomorrow, to recommend, notify them, they have a letter of this, but notify them that we would like them to immediately start advertising to fill the alternate position for the board. So I'm just going to have Karen do that letter. We don't need to have. All right, Karen, is there anything else?
No, we just have this form for Paul.
Paul?
Do we have to approve minutes, or we good?
Um, yes. Hold on.
That was a good job with the minutes.
Yeah, she did a very good one. Okay. We have a set of minutes to be approved for April 8th. Any discussion?
No.
Okay. Um, myself, Andrew, David, okay. Myself, David, Paul. So there's only three of us that sat, so, all right? We have a motion to approve the minutes on...
I'll approve the minutes.
April 8th. I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. And we have a motion to adjourn.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.